I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Hope that I'm getting the comments from the public at this time?
Exactly.
Yeah, it could be you, if you want to be the public.
I am the public.
You probably were getting more news about the county in the newspaper, but just thought I would catch you up on a couple things. Sales tax is doing very, very well. Surprisingly, even if the economy or anyone's complaining, but people are spending and they are building. Sales tax is over projection, so you'll be benefiting from that. It's good. Budget, we're just starting our budget negotiations and budget planning. Last year, we put a million dollars extra for Medicaid, and we are spending all of that. So we're going to have to put another million in for it. So this keeps growing every year. Tremendous. So I don't know where we're going with that. Jail construction proceeding very, very well, believe it or not. It's around schedule. Odds and landscaping usually things are, I think because of the weather, we haven't had to delay. So at this point, we're still hoping to get things able to open one section next spring. Airport, we're hoping to go out for a bid for construction of our terminal in spring. Our engineers have estimated a little higher than what we were anticipating late spring when we put everything on hold to negotiate with PJM. So things are, the price material, so everything's much, much higher. But if anyone is interested, by the way, in any of the PJM materials, the business plan, I have all that. If you would be interested in discussing it with me, I'd be happy to share all that with you. That's about it, unless you have questions for me.
I'd like to ask you about the rooftop pilot. What's your position on that?
It's interesting you should ask. Just yesterday, I got a letter. They put everything on hold. Something wasn't right, so all the meetings stopped. And yesterday, I got a letter that they are negotiating with federal government to start looking at the study again. And hopefully, what they're proposing will be accepted as far as going forward with it. And that they are planning a meeting late October, early November. No dates, but that.
What's your position on it?
I liked initially what I had heard at the first meeting because they're calling it the northern tier expressway. It's not rooftop like we... And they would consult with every community, whether you go through the community, around the community, enlarge a current highway. But every community would decide or have input in this. So I was still quite supportive of that.
Seems like not a lot of money.
Well, yeah. But the east-west traffic, it's very much needed. We're losing a lot of traffic east-west because they're going through Canada.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Celine.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else?
Since Brian brought up the east-west corridor, probably the board's going to have to decide whether they're for it or against it at some point. And you're also going to have to decide whether you're for it or against it coming to Rouse's Point or Plattsburgh. You might be for it, but if it goes to Plattsburgh, it won't help you. If you're against it, if it goes to Plattsburgh, it doesn't matter. So I think the board's going to decide two things. If they're for it, if it comes here, and if they're for it, if it goes to Platts... Actually, three things. If they're against it, or if they're for it, if it goes to Plattsburgh, or if they're for it, if it comes here.
How do you feel about it?
How do I feel about it? I don't know enough about it to... If it did like the northway and didn't disrupt a lot of property, I'd probably be for it. But I can't see it doing that without destroying some farms and other things, so I don't know. I think there's good things and bad things, right? I feel strongly both ways, Brian.
It seems like a lot of money, well, just...
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Prices just keep getting bigger and inflated.
I can imagine what the northway cost. I don't know.
How'd it go like that, eh?
No.
Yep.
Celine, I think Celine can tell you that. I attended two of the public hearings way back when. I think Celine and I were the only two that actually wanted them to sit here this way, put a bypass in. And actually connect it to 89, not only 87, connect it to 89. And it only makes sense if you're looking at the economic order. You know, you want to be able to move truck traffic or trade, let's put it that way, and connect it with... If you were there, you would have got the impression I got. There was no way that was going to happen. It was left up to the rest of the people in the county.
But it's not a dead issue, and I think if you keep pursuing and keep, you know, they're all... I see this two spurs, actually. One going to the new airport and one going to the bridge. That is possible. Doesn't have to go just one way.
And you don't appeal with that night down there. They definitely got a bill of bridge crumbling head.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know. I hear it all the time.
Anyone else? Opposed this section at this time? You have a chance again at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions? Can I adjourn a motion?
Will the exception minutes is written?
I'll second that. Motion by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There'll be no discussion. All in favor, vote by your side of the vote. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all have bills? Copies of the bills? Is there any additions or deletions? Max and others. You know, you're doing great. This year, you have to have that on.
I'd like to have more deletions.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills. Second. I'd just like to ask one question. Is this grand total of all the vouchers at $291,000, is that the total of all the bills paid this last page?
No, I didn't. Yes, it is.
It seemed like the bills were really high this morning.
Oh, did you see the utility bill? You see the utility bill?
Yep. It was frightful.
Yes, it is, isn't it? Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huprow. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, vote by your side of the vote. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have one letter that was addressed to the village board of Rouse's Point. And Mr. Mayor, just to let you know how quickly and efficiently your electric crew responded to the power failure at my home at 16...
Pearl Street.
Pearl Street, October 2nd at 7:15 PM. When high winds, with high winds and rain, I called Mike that's at the water plant at extension 303. Who called the appropriate people and then called me back to say people were on their way. Brian Pelkey and his crew came immediately, found the problem, fixed it, and went on their way. How fortunate we are in our little village to have such employees who take care of us, especially the electric crew that night, 10:02. But all of the others so willing to be there for us at any time. My sincere thanks to all of you. It's signed Barbara Ryan, Sue O'Connor, and Bill Kirk. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Report to the mayor and the board of trustees. Request executive session to discuss pending litigation.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote. Trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee...
Moore.
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 Aye.
And the mayor will tell you. And having one of them nights. I have a resolution here for NIPA. NIPA. The resolution is that we approve their changing of operation, of agreement, and to operate by their bylaws. Since whereas the village of Rouse's Point member of the New York Municipal Power Agency, NIPA, and the signature of the New York Municipal Power Agency Agreement dated April 17, 1996. And whereas two-thirds of the NIPA members have approved the attached amendment to the NIPA agreement. And whereas the proposed amendment will help NIPA operate more efficiently, therefore be a result of those of Rouse's Point approves and concurs with the attached amendment. The court shall sign the copy, and they need a roll call vote. Put that in formal motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor will tell you. And announce fall pickup. Annual fall pickup. The fall cleanup day for the village of Rouse's Point will commence on November 1st and through November 5th, 2004. Residents are reminded that the collection is for pickup of bagged green room. There will be no pickup, three limbs, paint cans, tires, stumps, waste oil, stones, sunat, or wood. Three limbs, three inch diameter may be brought down to the compost facility on Lilly Avenue. Residents are requested to bag all leaves and place some curb items in such a situation so that parked cars, so that cars and sold ones do not block the pickup truck. This will greatly facilitate the collection. And that's it for me, I think. I had to look up a minute. I have a couple other things that are not on the agenda. We have to, I think, draw up that copy so that's lots of keys. About four years ago, we started a process of putting the whole village on a master lock system so that there will be one master for every building and facility in the village. And that was the reason why, because one night we had a fire call at the sewer plant, and the gates were changed and locked. And we had to wait for somebody to come and open the gates. And we now have this dead nail on the master key. We started the front door, the village office is done. The rest of this, as you can go through and see, we're looking at to do the water plant and the water tower, put them all in the master system. Is $1,100, $1,107. The police station is $1,293. The rec center is $1,292. And that goes on to save with the other options. I think all the other sewer plant is completely done, I believe. All the substations and all the pumping stations, sewer plant are all done, are on that master system. Fire department has put in the Knox box system so we have access to one key that'll go to open any zillion. I don't think it includes either. Anyway, here's a proposal. I know we don't have the money in the budget, but I rang it up for discussion now. At one time, each department had money in their budget to do this, I would say, four years ago. For some reason or another, it never got done. I know Arsen's got $3,000 coming for a generator, but he doesn't want me to touch that. Anyway, that's it, folks. I know we're going to fix the back door on the municipal building. We used to purchase it under $225 to fix that. And that's going to get done. What we do with the rest of them, I mean, I had the guy up here, he had Mr. Moore. Now we got something to work with. It's up to the board what they want to do with. My proposal to this is if we can find the money, let's get a shot. Out of each, you know, we can find a little out of each department, maybe get Arsen to spring that free.
Put him in a fire truck with the Knox box?
We already got it. Already got it.
Boy, he does.
That red key, the master key, that will fit any one of the locks. Well, it does fit all of those.
What kind of system, Mr. Mayor? Did you say it was for the fire department?
Knox box. The Knox gelugens?
Gotcha.
Same way.
Well, you're saying that's currently in place?
That's in place.
That doesn't have anything to do with that?
No, nothing to do with that. That's in place. Senior Housing has a Knox box there so that we can go into senior housing. What it does is the fire control has to tone out in order to get this key. And they know who we've turned it out. If you get that key, then you can wait to open the Knox box, and there's the master key for the building. In the village's case, the master key is kept in the box. It's our own, cut in the comp. The school up here is putting one on. Champlain plastic, I think they've got one on, which is no longer ours. But I don't know even if that's the rekeyed Champlain or not. You got it. Any place that doesn't have people 24 hours a day that had automatic fire alarm systems should put the Knox box system on. It just saves time. So, most of the board's pleasure here. Simon, if you can find the money.
I think you'd be worried if you didn't.
If not? We can't find the money, we're in next year.
Well, one suggestion would be to revisit this at budget time, since it's not a fire department issue. Not an issue with a fire call. Perhaps we should look at it when we're designing the budget for next year.
It's not a fire department expense.
That's not what I'm saying. You said the current Knox box to the fire department for the village building is already in place.
Yeah, that's got nothing to do...
That's what I'm saying.
No, we don't.
Actually, you're looking at two separate issues here, Kelly.
Well, then you must, you answered my question though by saying the Knox box system had nothing to do with this.
That's right.
Okay. So if there is a fire call in any one of the village buildings now, the fire department is able to answer it? Without doing this, is my question?
No. Certainly. Got to do this. We've got to change the locks in order for it.
So if a fire call happens right now at the water plant, the fire department can't answer it without rekeying the lock?
There's somebody there.
There's somebody there, so that's not a problem.
Okay. What about at the police station?
Police station.
The water plant operator is there?
Yeah, but he's got to open the building. Right.
So if there's a fire here at the rec center, unless we rekey with these locks, we can't enter the fire call?
Can't get in this building. But I'm knocking, the door's down.
They made the sewer plant?
The sewer plant's done.
Okay, walk, blue building, not blue.
Blue building's done.
I think we should do it, but I don't think we have the money right now, so I think that's a calculus issue.
They got $3,000. We just got $3,000 for that old generator.
I just think we should revisit it again at budget time.
Well, I agree. Maybe we can't do it all, but maybe we can do the major part, some part of it. Like just one of the doors. Get this system moving. One of my three doors.
Well, once again, the only thing I can say is, this is the first I've seen of this, was today when I took it out of my mailbox. So do we have to make this decision tonight?
No, we don't.
This would be my second question.
No, I don't think we have to make it.
Then I would suggest that we wait.
I would suggest that we have Arsen look in two weeks' visit again.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Squeeze Arsen. Don't we wait and squeeze Arsen?
It just seems like more and more often, though, we're coming up with expenses that haven't been budgeted. And rather than wait until they are budgeted a few months from now, we seem to want to get Arsen to squeeze every week, every time we have a meeting. And eventually, he's probably going to run out of squeezing room, so...
That is it for me, trustee Huprow.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded by trustee Huprow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote. Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor will tell you.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the tort of the public. It was even noted for a public hearing on local law number five, mending chapter 120 zoning in the village code. That's simply the thing we discussed at the last meeting about people have existing edges or jobs are exempt from a setback.
Need a second?
I need a second.
You got it.
Okay.
Motion by trustee Huprow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, vote by your side of the vote. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Last meeting, we discussed the proposed new village logo. I have not heard a negative of anybody since that last meeting. And I am going to make a motion that we go ahead with the new village logo so that we can make plans about the new signs for the spring. I have the information from border press, by the way, the border press designed this not nearly, not nearly at the cost of the cost that we hired it out to Albany or Syracuse or someplace like that. And included in it, and I don't understand all this stuff about computer technology, but there are different formats that can be used on your software film, and they've included a CD. You know, she's talking about all that kind of stuff. Anyway, all of that is included. And the logo is, for those of you that are visiting tonight, is a link between the old Montgomery and the new, and incorporating the current logo of the sailboat with Lake Champlain. Of course, I, as representative of the province, support it.
Add a motion?
I did.
Do I have a second to motion? And motion by trustee Huprow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
I would consider this to be a negative comment, and I know that we talked about the fact that at the last meeting, we would be revisiting it. Is it possible to... I know when we talked about this before, we talked about the fact that we were looking for a logo that might be different on signs than it would be on the webpage. The computer disk, is that something to go on the webpage?
That can go on the webpage. It can do... You probably understand computers a lot better than I do, Kelly.
Well, I know. I mean, we talked about the site. I don't know, because I'm not going to involve in this at all, but is it possible, before we go ahead and make the decision, if we were to look at the other... I know Phil had had a couple of possibilities. Maybe if we put them all side by side and kind of compared where some of them might be appropriate on signs and others might be appropriate on the webpage? I know we had decided that we might look at more than one possibility.
Right, and we can look at more than one, but we have to have something that is going to be the official village logo.
Right, but it's...
And this would be it. That's what I propose.
Right, but I'm saying, could we possibly maybe get a couple more, you know, so that we would have something to choose from?
Well, I've been about, what, four months, five months working on this, and nobody has confirmed anything at this point. So I'm assuming that either they don't care or they're happy with what was proposed.
Have we asked anyone else to design something, or no? No, because they want...
We told them what we wanted.
Right, we told the border pressure we wanted.
Yes, we did.
I know at one of the meetings that we talked about perhaps having a discussion with the steering committee for the downtown waterfront rehabilitation. Has that been discussed in the meetings in terms of the logo?
No, we haven't.
We didn't want to spend any more money.
We spent enough money. I don't want to spend $1,500 if I can get it done for $100.
That one is what you want.
Well, it's what I want. Otherwise, I wouldn't have presented it. But the rest of you have to want to do, or at least some of the rest of you.
I'd like to see some sort of decision made, one way or the other, because DOT contacted me today about putting the sign back up at New 11. And I have asked them to put it on hold until I can find more immediate, because if you go with this design, with another design, the framework and everything cannot be used.
Right.
So why go to all that expense putting that all in if we're going to take it out?
That's true. But, I mean, there will be a new design. That was my understanding. So maybe that will answer their question.
Well, and then tomorrow, I just told them not to, not at all.
We could always put it in, too.
Right.
We could always put the village group in.
Oh, no, that's not a problem.
No.
The problem is, part of their contract to committee is they took the sign out, so they're going to replace it. We'll put it back up. And they want to know where we wanted it, how we wanted it, and stuff. And at this point, I, after John had brought this up the other day, the last meeting, I said to them, no. Listen, we may be changing, but don't put the old one back at this point to the airport.
Right.
And we want to light that sign on that end. Really, to make that meet maybe tomorrow, make a decision for what sign, or whatever, where it's going to go. Brian wants to get that conduit in before the ground freezes. That's my summary on it.
Well, we could set a wire, too, though, just something.
If you get the conduit, that's not a problem. We need to know what's going to go. And we have to look at that tomorrow.
Are we getting, we're planning to get new signs for that location, huh?
Yes.
Well, if we're going to...
Unfortunately, the signs that were there aren't very attractive.
Well, they need updating. They do. I think all of the village signs need updating. That's true.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor of counting motion, vote by your side of the vote.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I don't think that we've had enough chance to look at a number of different designs. So I don't think we have enough information to make a decision at this point.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. One other item. As we all know, the Lake Street and Champlain Street projects are nearing completion. And I think that the mayor ought to be given some credit for getting some things in this village by constantly being at the engineer's office and talking with the state contractor or whatever. For instance, the landscaping near the underpass has been done. And the street prints at the crosswalks makes our place look a lot more inviting. And I know this, Mr. Mayor, that you've put a lot of time on it with those people. They're probably sick of seeing you. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Huprow. Trustee Penfield.
I know Eric's not here, I need yours. Eric, Doug, do you have an update for us on the sewer project?
Sure. We started excavating last week on the sewer project out of the sewer plant on Lilly Avenue. We started excavating and placing the 12-inch sewer force main just inside the sewer plant fence. The force main has been carried from the fence to the plant. And right now, fittings and pertinence are being put in the ground for the eventual connection to the sewer plant. The plan there is to continue later this week with that force main from this side of the sewer plant fence heading over to Shazie Hardware. Also, tomorrow, we will be starting the excavation for the outfall line out along Route 2 over by the lake in the OGS right of way, and we'll be proceeding westward from there. Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to ask about the telephone company that's going to rent some, if you want to use our... Oh, it's all taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Would you explain that? I didn't, I only got part of that.
While the trench is open, there had been some discussion between the village and Champlain Tell years ago when this project was planned. And when the trench was open, Champlain Tell would like to have their people there to be able to put conduit in for future use of utilities going underground. And so what happened in the heat of things is that message got mishandled so that we didn't know we were supposed to be allowing them to put the conduits in. But after a 24-hour delay, that got straightened out, so we've got our trench.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Doug.
The second item actually I have, Brian, deals with exactly your question. In some of the discussion that's occurred over the past couple of weeks, and in talking to Doug, we talked about whether or not we should take advantage of the time while we're digging that outfall line for some future planning, as we've done elsewhere in the village, and investigating the possibility of putting conduit along the trench where the outfall line is. Or, which I guess could be rented in the future for utilities, telecommunications, fiber optics, and so on. And in talking to Doug this afternoon, I was mentioning that if we wanted to consider that, now would be really the most opportune time to do that to, as our contractors, getting ready to do the digging along the outfall line. And I guess that it would mean we probably would need some sort of a procedure in place on how we would go about doing this. But we certainly could check with Brian and with Doug regarding specifications of what kind of piping we can do and then ask the contractor to investigate the cost of the installation. And I don't know whether any of you have any thoughts on that. It seems like something that we need to do sort of in a timely fashion because of the digging that they anticipate starting tomorrow, but... Any thoughts?
Well, these guys said that they were here last, the last meeting, that they're interested in running fiber optics. So we know that it's coming, you know. Only thing is, the same thing. Do we have the money to do it? You know, how much is it going to be?
Well, I suggested to Doug maybe that we could investigate what the cost would be. We may have some of the materials here in the village. We have to check with Brian to see what he has, and what some of the specifications can be. But it certainly is something to think about. And if we were to rent space and the conduit in the future, it might be whatever the installation costs. it might be whatever the installation costs are. So...
Have they... That company, Ramon, tell that back to us at all?
They've gotten back to us on a couple items. Their... In fact, Doug was just talking with them earlier this evening. We're supposed to be getting some more particulars, but we have a basic idea of what they might need. But I think what we're all, you know, I think in talking about this, I think just in general, whether we consider this company or any other company down the road, just to have a line in there while this is all torn up is a consideration.
How can our electric group look at it?
No, what... They're spread as thin as they're ever going to get right now. We'll discuss that later on. But we have... What the ideal thing was, while the contractor has this opened up, we could get a... Ask them for a price to put in, whether you put in one or two four-inch or lines or depending, whatever you want. And they would do this side by side when they're putting in the other line.
I'd just look at the cost.
What's the ballpark figure, Doug?
Well, the contractor offered to provide us with and asking that we had to give back to them what size pipe, plus whether or not we, the village, have enough pipe in stock, which we may. And, but I was just... You can't hold me to this, all right? But I'm thinking that, well, I'm thinking it's like a five thousand dollar or three thousand dollar add or something like that. I'm not expecting it to be exorbitant, especially if we provide the pipe. Because they're excavating the trench anyways. They're backfilling the trench anyways. All we're doing is adding a little bit more time for them to assemble the pipe, roll it in, and then continue their backfilling. So I don't think it's going to be a huge cost.
Where's that money going to come from, roughly?
It'd have to come from our senate.
You can't pinch anymore, so...
Actually, I say, can we add that on to the electric thing? The underground power? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I guess.
They got, because it's all, you know, that's...
The idea would be in renting in the future. You would bring back the installation cost.
Yes.
So it would be in the...
It's an investment.
You've got the money to pay for it before you get...
That's very true.
Well, we've got a lot of money in electric fund. Our senate can waive that one. Our senate can leave that one.
Yeah. Not getting any cable then. That's our next... That's our next big issue.
Why don't we let Doug investigate what the cost would be, and then we can take it from there?
Let's start filling that back in, roughly.
Oh, tomorrow, we're going to dig and fill tomorrow. They're going to dig and fill as they go. But what I'll do is I'll get in touch with Act Two first thing tomorrow morning, and I'll ask them for the cost for a one-four-inch or two-four inches.
Well, do you know what they're asking for that up there from Vermont? So we can... We got something to work with.
We have an idea that that would take care of that, if they become our customer.
I mean, fiber optic is real tiny, small, isn't it? I mean, four-inch would be...
But they might want to put more than one in. I think we're okay with two-four inches. I think we're... Plenty of redundancy there, and we'll be safe. So I'll get a number tomorrow, and we'll call Phil. Talk to him about something.
I guess what I have to ask is, depending on what Doug gets for price, and because of the critical timing of this thing, you won't need to get until November 1st, and that's going to be active path.
Bill, if we've got pipe on hand, it may not be that kind of a problem. We may have enough to... We may have enough to get started on it, if we've got pipe on hand.
But it's going to be a change order to the contract.
I understand that.
And I can sign them up to, I think it's five thousand dollars. Do you want me to do that?
Good idea, to short notice, but if I get the money back, I can get it back eventually, you know?
We might be able to do it as a side contract. Instead of it being a change order to the contract, because I don't think that the activity would be reimbursable by the SRF with the sewer project to see. So it might be like a separate contract between the village and Act Two for that action. Does that make sense?
All they're going to do is work it out tomorrow. Where we go from there, when I see a bill, fine.
Our senate's got three thousand, let's spend that.
This is something we don't have time to wait on.
I know, I know, yes.
But I... I'm not comfortable necessarily, you know, without knowing exactly what the end cost is and it's going to be. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable going forward without knowing, without having that information.
Could it be something that could... The decision could be delegated to the sewer committee, so that once we have the data, the sewer committee could meet and decide?
If it isn't over five thousand dollars, the administrator could do it.
Correct.
I would go with it. At this point...
What is usually the cost of rental for a conduit, if somebody wants to run something through a waste?
I've seen prices vary, but right now, some of our paperwork shows it was a thousand dollars, thirty-five cents a foot, and that many.
We can get the money back pretty quick.
If we get a customer.
I think we got somebody knocking on our door right here last week, weeks ago.
Ain't come in yet.
Were they running all fiber optics along the railroad tracks?
No, they did not. They're running fiber optics from New England over. Other companies ran in fiber optics up the railroad tracks. They're going to tie into them.
They ran it whole length and north length, didn't they?
They ran it to Northway, and they ran two right down the railroad tracks. There's three sets of fiber optics that go into the village. And for your information, one of the companies went bankrupt.
They're in the cutting edge, it sounds like.
You got that big building up there named thing in it?
Well, the other option is not to do this. I mean, we don't have to do it. We really only brought up tonight for discussion, basically because of the timing. With the gentleman who were here at the last meeting, and the fact that the contractor's going to begin digging tomorrow. I mean, tonight is the night. If we're going to talk about it, it's board. But we don't have to go forward with it. And if we feel that this isn't the right timing, then we don't have to do it.
Here's the other thing. Here's the other end of it. Doesn't matter what we decide, or it does matter what we decide for us. If they decide to go ahead, then they're going to be coming after us to go in that right of way, and we can't stop them. Stay right away, and they'll put their own in. And they put their own in, then we don't get any revenue.
But we wouldn't have had the cost of installing it, I...
How about I make a motion, we'll go and let Phil go up to five thousand? How many feet we docking, Doug, instead of...
Well, we're talking two, three thousand feet, probably.
Five thousand dollars is not going to do it, Doug.
Well, if you're providing the materials. Again, the excavation's already being performed, so the excavation and all is not extra. We provide the material, if we can, then it's simply glue it together and shove it in.
Yeah, if you're only getting dollars off, where the wire they run through at?
Yeah, but that's an annual, that's not...
Oh, it's every year we get that.
Yeah, that's not... It's a time period thing. It's not a one-shot forever.
That'd be almost forever, because it's always going to be fiber optics.
What was your motion, Henry?
I'd like to give Phil the opportunity to spend some of that money worth of five thousand dollars to do it.
And if it goes over that?
How about we put five thousand dollars in, reach a certain point, and then... I mean, it's still going to be cheaper if we only dig part of it up, you know? We provide the material.
They only want to go up as far as our sewer plant with it, right, Doug?
Hey, yeah, they want to go to the sewer plant and then...
And then they'll run from there themselves.
But then, you see, that's still on our property. So we'll have to put that in. It'll be on...
The next spring, we could dig that.
Exactly. Take them over to the railroad right of way. Then they have to deal with the railroad and the DOT and all that.
Second round. Good idea.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any other discussion?
I wish we had more time. I know, but we don't, we don't. I hate to miss the moment. I think we can get a date for it. It just adds up, you know?
And quite honestly, I don't know whether we'll end up going with the concern that these two gentlemen were here for at the last meeting. But really, part of this discussion has come out of what happened two weeks ago. So we really haven't... And part of it came out of Brian's question about the phone company late last week. So it really has arisen in the last few days. And again, it's not something that we're tied to. We don't have to do it. So I just know that it has been tossed around the office for the last week or so. This is our one opportunity to talk about it together as a board.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? All of in favor of the motion, vote by your side of eye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Terrence.
I just have one thing that's not on the agenda. I'd like to correct some information that has been circulating in the village. It's incorrect. I lived at 33 Pratt Street since 1987. My driveway is the same one that was put in by Mr. Babe Bebo in 1985 or 1986. My driveway was coated this July by Lucius Seal Coating from Altona, New York, at a cost paid for by me of three hundred and twenty-three dollars. A new driveway was installed at 37 Pratt Street, which is Stanley Moore's parents' house, the former Norman Moore residence. The driveway was paid for by the owners of the property. And the village of Rouse's Point did not pay any of the driveway costs. So the information that's out saying the village put my driveway in, first of all, is incorrect. And the driveway at 37 Pratt Street was paid for by Mr. Mule, I believe, the owner of the property. That's all I have to report today.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Huh? Thank you for putting that up there. Done a thing? Thank you, trustee Moore. Bill?
Can we insert one?
Oh, thank you. Our senate.
I just want to remind everyone that November 1st is the last day of the new taxes for the town over the county for collection. And hopefully, you all got a copy of my sewer project finance update.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, just one thing. I... We're working on the easement for the electrical to go behind the Menards of Snowco Station over through the dentist's property. And the surveyor's been in town. We got our shots, and we should have some papers for Brian to look at next week.
Thank you, Doug. Mike?
Nothing to report.
Marissa?
Thank you.
Save the best for last, thank you.
I'll try to be brief. I just wanted to start out with a brief update on our consultant interviews that took place last week. We had five firms respond to our request for proposals. Out of those five, we chose three to interview based upon recommendations from the Department of State and other communities in the area. And also based upon, of course, the responses to the budget and so on that we asked for. What we found is, as we looked at the three firms that we interviewed, is that their cost of doing the visioning, the downtown and waterfront revitalization plan, the design standards were all very, very similar. Where they really went into different areas was based upon the final design of the waterfront park and pier. And that, from speaking to the consultants, is because of the uncertainty. They felt it was difficult to give us the final number because they didn't know what they'd be designing. So it's hard when you don't know whether you're designing something very large and grand, or something rather modest, to give a dollar amount. But in our interviews, and Dick is here from the steering committee, he may want to chime in, we found that Elan Planning and Designing, which is a small firm located in Saratoga, emerged as the clear choice of the steering committee and the other representatives who were there. They're a small firm, but they're very experienced in both downtown and waterfront revitalization. They're also bringing in an engineer who specializes in transportation analysis. Brian, you might know him. His name is Brian McMahon. He's done some work for Homeland Security on the trucking at the border. And so he's very, very knowledgeable about the truck traffic that flows through this region. And he gave us some ideas about the issue of bypass or traffic calming, things that can be done to keep the traffic in its same flow. He also is a big proponent in what he called value engineering. All of the representatives from Elan know that there has been engineering work done on the waterfront park and pier. And Brian McMahon said one of the first tasks would be an analysis of that design to see how... What could be used to try to salvage as much as possible of the engineering work that's already been done. I did some reference checks today. Lisa Nagel, who's one of the principals at Elan, worked for Saratoga Associates for nine years. She has worked with Mayor Blais in Lake George on their whole waterfront walkway. She's doing their comprehensive plan. She's done design guidelines, zoning analysis. He speaks very, very highly of her, as does the administrator of the village of Canostota, where they're currently doing kind of the similar downtown waterfront plan based upon Canostota's location on the former Erie Canal, on the, I guess what they call the old Erie Canal. So, Dick, I don't know if you wanted to chime in in terms of the recommendation of the committee?
No, the committee recommends that we go with Elan designing planning from Saratoga Springs. They seem to be the most... Right on top of it, they just seem to have the best presentation in my book. They seem to have covered all the bases and what have you on that aspect of things. When you're a novice going into this, it's kind of hard to see who's going to be the best of what. But with Melissa going to school and Phil going to school, you send them there, they did a good job, came back, and got a lot of information. And we had Paula Marshman, I think?
Marshman.
Marshman from the DOT, D O S, what it care was. And it worked out well. She did a great job helping us out.
Thanks, Dan. And so we really are not at the point where we're ready to put a contract before the board to approve. If the board is willing to send us off in this direction, I would like to go down and meet with Paula Marshman from the Department of State and Lisa Nagel need with Paula Marshman from the Department of State and Lisa Nagel, to see if we can work out the cost of the package for the initial tasks, which would be, again, the visioning, the plan, the design concepts and guidelines, and a concept plan for the waterfront park and pier. See if we can work on a price, get the money all coming out of the right grants, and bring a proposal back to you, hopefully for the next board meeting. If the board is, would like me to go in that direction, that would be my recommendation.
Melissa, the last, in the first round, Elan was rejected.
Right.
What in their presentation made it different this time?
In the last round, they came in as a partner with Ann Holland, who was working as a consultant. She was going to be the main person, she brought them in for some of the design issues, and I think that there was concern that we wanted someone that had more actual experience with the downtown and waterfront revitalization. Them coming in on their own, they're the point people, and they, they have the experience. And they also, I think another huge strength is Lisa's personality, she's very good, she comes across very well in meetings, we think she'd do very well with the public. And that was actually something that both of the people I spoke to today on her reference check, said she's extremely good at dealing with people who come to meetings and have concerns. They said, you know, the naysayers, but, you know, people with divergent opinions. She's very good at listening to them and, and, you know, kind of facilitating that positive visioning that we're looking for.
So Ann Holland will not be working with them?
No, they're coming in by themselves, with the exception of this Brian McMahon, who is from Kelsey Engineering.
Huge talent.
It's a huge firm, but he's the person that they want to bring in, they're, I guess they've worked together for 10 years, and he has that, really, I think we're fortunate to get that particular expertise in terms of the truck traffic in the North Country, because a lot of people don't believe us, you know. When you tell people about the traffic and the trucks that go through the downtown, they're skeptical in a lot of cases. So I think he's a believer.
People are brash for you, aren't they?
Well, that's right, that's right. They became believers, that's.
Wow, I can't believe how many trucks go through the building.
I wish they'd leave it up there.
Yeah, I know, at least two very happy people. So is that, is the board agreeable with that, that direction to pursue?
Yeah, good idea. You need a motion? Phil?
Good, give them some direction so they can go forward, yeah.
I'll make that motion, and we go ahead with the confirm from Saratoga Springs.
Second. Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Hucker. Any other discussion? Any other discussion, all those in favor, both by you, side of eye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. I was just going to move on to the boat launch project.
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
One of the requirements to complete our contract with the state for the boat launch grant is a boundary map, and this is something that Phil and I have been working on with Jim Abdullah, trying to get this done since the summer. The surveyors are apparently all very busy, but we finally did get two quotes, which I believe are before you, for the survey of the boat launch property, and also the Montgomery Street Park and Pier area, because that, we will need to have that all surveyed. Looking at the proposals, the less expensive one was the $1,570 proposal from WCT Wilhelm Chetel and Town. I believe they've done work in the village, Phil said he's had good experience with them. So if the board is in agreement, I would request authorization to go ahead and ask Jim to hire them to do the survey.
I think we need our motions, I. Yeah, I just made it, go second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hucker, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? No, Dan, all those, all those, both by you, side of eye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. A quick update on the D and H, because we had talked about our adjustment in our Quality Communities Grant to get in and do the environmental assessment. Dick and I took two representatives from environmental assessment firms through the building last week. The initial news is very good, in that both of them were very impressed at the structural soundness of the building, and, and so that's always nice to hear. Upon the initial inspection, and of course, this is just in their walkthrough, they thought the pigeon waste would not be much of an issue, probably confined to the attic, not, not too bad to clean up. The lead paint may be a more extensive problem to remediate. I didn't realize that there are, there are some very specific guidelines for lead paint that are comparable, perhaps even to asbestos, according to what we were told. And so you have to have special training, you have to have certification, because it's all grant funded, we have to meet all those requirements, even if the volunteers are doing the labor. I know. So they're both preparing quotes for kind of a laundry list of cleanup tasks. I asked them to break it out item by item, so that we can pick and choose what we want done. Due to the condition of the building, it's very likely that what we might want to do is a quick initial cleanup, get the pigeon waste out, get rid of any loose debris. Now, this is, of course, assuming that the, the paint test is led, and I think we all think it's highly likely that it will. But do a quick cleanup, what they would probably do is stabilize what's on the walls, they kind of spray it with some sort of a compound that keeps it there. That would be the first step. Then the volunteer crew could come in, strip the walls down, most of these walls are coming down, there are partitions that were installed, kind of carve the building up, pull the drop ceilings down, clean it out, at which point then you have to bring the environmental assessment firm, the cleanup crew back in again, because you've exposed probably new paint, new things to deal with. So that's probably what we're looking at in the cleanup. Obviously, this is not going to be fast, but at least we have a start, we do have the go-ahead from the Department of State to use the money for this purpose. And the recommendation that they made, and I think it's really an excellent one, is that as soon as possible, we get that historical preservation architect in, because they'll direct this process. And the man's, I was really impressed with the second gentleman, he's an older gentleman, he's done a lot of historic buildings, and he said it's like hiring an architect if you're going to do major renovations in your house. If you do it up front, you get someone who knows what they're doing, you're going to save yourself money in, in the long run. And so we do have that council on the arts program that we just have to get linked up with to get two-thirds of the money, probably 1,200 of the 1,800, to get the architect in. So we're just going in with your, we'll wait for the quotes to come in, and I'll try to get more information and get that going if the board is okay with that. Thank you. And last thing, I had the privilege to attend a chart meeting, which is the Clinton County Operating Action Committee for the Lakes to Locks Byway, and I think somebody's probably much more familiar with that than I am. It's certainly going to be an important association for the village, if we do want to tap into those scenic byway, 80% grant, 20% local match funds down the road. I had told Janet Kennedy that I would attend, she's been very nice about writing letters of support for our grant applications, and I was appointed to the Planning and Infrastructure Committee, which hopefully will, you know, get us in on the ground floor when potential monies become available. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. I just have a question for Mike Jacob. Would you just give us an update from the zoning as far as the new pharmacy that's proposed to come to the village?
They had the public hearing last Thursday, I believe, and it was approved. There was a little bit of opposition from a couple of people, but basically, the room was filled, and there was a lot, a lot more support than there was opposition. So they're going forward, he is going to be applying for his building permit this week. I spoke with his lawyer today, he was a little concerned about if the village required subdivision approval before he could buy that lot, and I explained that process, which wasn't an issue, so they should be moving forward any day now.
When will they break ground?
He wants to be open by Christmas, so.
That's good news.
I think it's a good project, I think the village needs it, and I think it's going to be nice, despite what some say.
Well, we need it.
It's going to be on, on Clay Street next to the dentist's office in the corner of the.
Could you just briefly tell us the other building, the other businesses that are going to be in there?
Well, the other businesses, they have a franchise for, to sell Radio Shack products. And the other thing is, they're negotiating with the Ayers Credit Union to move the credit union into there, but that's not a done deal. Someone was here from the credit union saying that it's an involved process, they have to change their charter, apparently, but they are working on it, so at some point in time, I would hope to see the credit union in there, or at least an ATM machine, at the very least.
I thought there was another business in the board there, like a sub shop, or?
No.
Just another rumor in the village? Okay.
You must have your ear to the ground.
Yeah, okay. Open a meeting to the public at this time, if anybody would, would listen to the board. If not, I'll entertain a motion for recess. Motion by Trustee Hucker, seconded by Trustee Moore, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Recession for about five minutes, not then, five minutes.